All right. Good evening. Welcome to Baltimore City Council's annual Taxpayers Night. As we continue to take measures to protect the public's health and safety during the COVID-19 pandemic, we convene for our first ever Hybrid Taxpayers Night. Residents and council members are joining us tonight, both here in City Hall and online via WebEx. Taxpayers Night provides the public an important opportunity to comment on City Council Bill 22-0235, the ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, and Council Bill 20-0236, annual property tax fiscal year 2023. This is a meeting of the Baltimore City Council's Ways and Means Committee. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District and Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Council President Nick Mosby. Members of the committee, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, as well as Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District, and Councilman Tony Glover, 13th District. Also in attendance this evening are a host of representatives from City Council President Nick Mosby's office, Mayor Brandon Scott's office, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, other city agencies, and the Baltimore City Public School System. For those of you attending here at City Hall, I would ask you to please wear a face mask while in the hearing room. This guidance comes from Baltimore City Health Department and the Mayor's Restoring Services Oversight Committee, and allows us to safely maintain the maximum possible capacity here in the room. Please also take a moment now to also silence your cell phones and electronic devices. For those attending virtually, please keep yourself on mute until you have been recognized by the Chair. We've also been joined virtually by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District. Both of them are members of the committee, as well as Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. I'd like to note at the top that everyone testifying tonight is here because they care for and are invested in our city, and they feel strongly about some aspect of this budget. The testimony may at times be passionate. We expect that members of the council and members of the public will keep order and ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. Persons who are disruptive will be asked to leave or ejected from the virtual meeting. The purpose of Taxpayers Night is not for the council to make speeches or to debate with members of the public. We are here to listen to your comments, which along with other written and verbal testimony we have received and will receive from the public, along with information received from agencies during their individual budget hearings next week, will help guide our decisions as we pass this year's budget. Again, we are here to listen to you, and we will not respond to testimony given this evening, but the Chair may ask clarifying questions as needed on behalf of any council members. As to any questions from council members, for a member of the public be directed to the Chair. In addition, the Chair may make a statement that may be needed to guide the public in the proper direction if they are seeking information or guidance to city services. There are two points I do want to make at the top of this hearing so that we can head off any potential confusion. Number one, the mayor and city council are not proposing an increase in real property tax rates. Let me repeat that again. The mayor and city council are not proposing an increase in real property tax rates. The annual announcement of proposed tax rates required by state law contains some confusing language, but the rate is proposed to remain constant. The proposed real property tax rate is $2.20 per $100 of assessment, the same as the previous fiscal year, and that rate is $2.408 for homeowner occupied properties. Number two, the preliminary budget bill is crafted by the mayor and his team. The council has not yet made any changes or amendments to the budget bill. Under the current city charter, the council may cut funds from the budget, but does not have the power to reallocate those funds to different departments or programs without the cooperation of the mayor. While changes to this process were approved by the voters of Baltimore City through charter amendment, those changes do not go into effect until July 1 of 2022. The first budget year for those changes will be fiscal year 2024. Earlier today, the committee received an update on the mayor's introductory budget proposal from the Department of Finance. That briefing was recorded and will be available on the Charm TV Citizens Hub on YouTube. The preliminary fiscal year 2023 operating budget has been recommended at $3.32 billion. That is a decrease of $526.7 million below the fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. BBMR will explain this decrease, but it generally has to do with American Rescue Plan funding that was allocated during last year's budget process. The capital plan is recommended at $792.6 million. This is an increase of approximately $305 million above the fiscal year 2022 adopted capital plan. Before we go on to public testimony, I'd like to recognize City Council President Nick Mosby for brief introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all in attendance tonight. This is what good government does. It opens up the halls and the walls and the windows to hear that our citizens understand and know that this council is here to listen to your concerns, listen to your questions, and we hope to have a very efficient and effective budget process. So again, thank you for participating. It doesn't end tonight. If there's additional follow-up or feedback for the members of the public to the committee or any individual council member, please feel free to do so. But again, thank you for participating and being civically engaged.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll now turn to a... We've also been joined by Councilman James Torrance, 7th District. We will now turn to a very brief presentation from Bob Seneme, the city's budget director, who runs the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, or BBMR, within the Department of Finance. Bob?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Bob Seneme, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. I'm going to run through a very brief presentation. As Councilman Costello said, there was a longer version of this today. If folks want to go back to Charm TV and watch that with a little bit more detail, I'm going to try to get through this real quick so we can get to public testimony. So, and for whoever's running the slides, I'll just kind of say next slide and we'll go forward. So, next slide. So, the agenda for tonight is just to go over an overview, a quick overview of the budget, and then to provide a little bit more detail on the revenue side and the spending side of the budget. Next. So first on the overview. So the budget, remember, is split up into two pieces. There's an operating budget and a capital component. The next slide will show you what this looks like visually for folks that are following at home. The capital budget, think of the capital budget as our physical improvements to the city. So this is a perfect example of that. If you have the pools, for example, the construction of a pool or improvement of the pool would be in the capital budget. The staffing, the pool itself, the lifeguards would be in the operating budget. And next slide, we have, for fiscal '23, in terms of the overall numbers, we have a recommendation of $3.3 billion in the operating budget and $792 million in the capital budget. Looking at the general fund alone, we're recommended at $2.147 billion for fiscal 2023. Next, in terms of COVID and federal aid. If you remember, we've been getting some support from the federal government for, during the course of COVID. I wanted to confirm what's in and not in the budget. So, we were getting CARES Act funding. That funding has expired. That was expired at the end of last December. We're also getting FEMA support where we're applying for reimbursement for certain expenses. We expect that to run out sometime in fiscal '23, so neither of those two are in the budget. There was $641 million of recovery. ARPA funds, we call it, was allocated to the city. That was all appropriated in last year's budget, in the fiscal '22 budget, and that will roll over and carry forward until it is fully spent. So you won't see that in the '23 budget in particular. Next slide. One more ahead, sorry. So the ARPA awards, we do have an exhibit in the book to show what has been committed so far out of the ARPA funds, which is about $481 million of the $641 has been committed so far. So again, none of those funds are in the '23 budget, all appropriated last year, but the Recovery Office has been providing updates to the council on that progress. Moving ahead to revenue. On the next slide, and one ahead. So, this pie chart shows you the sources of city revenue. We break them into three general categories: general fund, grant, and enterprise. Most of what we'll talk about tonight is the general fund, which is where we have the most flexibility with our dollars. And on the next slide, just looking at that general fund in particular, nearly half of our general fund revenue comes from property taxes. 20% comes from income taxes. And as was mentioned here, there are no new taxes or fees in this budget, and the property tax rate remains unchanged. In terms of our projections for fiscal '23, moving ahead to the next slide. Property tax is expected to grow for the 10th consecutive year. So this year, group one homes were reassessed in the city. That's very generally the northern slice of the city and a small chunk of downtown. We did have some losses on commercial valuations because of COVID, but residential growth was strong. So we'll have our 10th straight year of property tax growth in fiscal '23. Next slide, we'll also have income tax growth in fiscal '23. And this has been one of the pleasant surprises during COVID is that I haven't really seen our income tax receipts affected too much. A lot of that is because there was, you know, a lot of federal and state aid going to businesses and organizations and individuals, unemployment insurance, stimulus checks, things of that sort that has helped keep our income tax receipts strong. Next slide, tourism and visitor revenues. This is a combination of parking, hotel admissions and amusement and convention center revenues. And you can see from here, we got hit really bad in fiscal '21, lost almost half of those four sources combined. But good news is we've seen a pretty steady recovery, and we expect to be at 85% of pre-COVID levels in the fiscal '23 budget for those sources combined. And then finally, on the revenue side, a couple other items on the next slide. Transfer and recreation tax is projected at $90.1 million. We're actually doing much better than that this year, but we expect the market to cool off a little bit with higher interest rates. Our traffic camera projection is largely unchanged. We're rolling out some additional cameras, but we get less, you know, year over year as driver behavior changes. There are the new I-83 speed cameras that are budgeted in fiscal '23. We're projecting $34.7 million for those revenues. All that money must go back to the, all the net revenues have to go back to improvements on I-83 itself, per state law. And then there's a new source coming in this year where it had been approved for a plan to get $40 million of additional reimbursement for EMS, for EMS services that we deliver. That's a state program. It's called the Emergency Services Payment Plan, and that will start in fiscal '23. So moving to the expenditure side, and just going through a couple highlights. On the next slide, one more ahead. So, highlights for this year's budget. We're meeting our first year schools contribution from the Kerwin legislation, a total of $332.8 million going to city schools. We've got $70 million of one-time funds going to capital projects. We're starting a FIRE apprenticeship program to improve the link between high school students and city employment. $13 million, combination of state and city funds, to start our work to comply with the ADA lawsuit that the city is under, funding the last stage of the ERP projects, you know, starting up this new revenue stream for EMS, and also funding a campaign, an ad campaign, to try to attract families into Baltimore City. On the next slide, you can see we organize our budget by pillar. This is the mayor's action plan that we build our budget around. The mayor's action plan, which you can see, has a series of goals for each pillar of what we're trying to accomplish as a city. And next slide shows the funding in this year's budget by pillar. About a third of the overall budget is public safety, and another third is for clean and healthy communities. And then finally, just running through each of the pillars quickly with a couple of highlights. So, next slide, if you could skip ahead to, one more, I'm sorry, to prioritizing youth. We mentioned the contribution to support city schools, which is an increase versus '22. We're also opening the Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Center in Cherry Hill this year. So we have another $1.2 million of operating costs in the budget to support that new center. On public safety, next slide. We're adding positions in BPD to support the group violence reduction strategy. If you remember, there was Recovery Office money designated to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement to kick off that strategy. With some of that new EMS revenue, we're also making some investments directly back in EMS. Two new medic units will be on the street. We have two diversion programs where we're trying to take some pressure off of our hospitals and our local emergency ecosystem, and some administrative and quality assurance staff, too, to try to improve EMS services. We're one of the busiest EMS services in the country. And so with this new revenue, we're going to put some of it right back to EMS. Clean and healthy, on the next slide. We'll be investing in a software with the Department of General Services to try to better track our energy usage. We have some buildings that are partially occupied because of COVID. We think there are savings there with that small investment, and we're adding a position and planning to focus on preparing for extreme weather events, which are becoming more common. And then, of course, in the utility side, the Water For All program is in its first full year of funding. That's the program to provide discounts to certain customers to make sure that people can pay their water bills. Fourth pillar, equitable neighborhood development, on the next slide. We're making an investment in the Department of Housing and Community Development to try to speed up our vacant property acquisition and disposition process. We're also adding some positions in our law department to improve our compliance on contract spend today. So we set goals for the amount of spend, a percent of spend, that we want to do with minority and woman-owned businesses, and we need some help on the compliance end to make sure we're meeting those targets. And then finally, last, responsible stewardship of city resources, the fifth pillar. We're funding this year, there's $2 million to make enhancements to Cub Union salaries. Cub Union, the positions that we're directing some of that money to are things like building inspectors, office assistants, and field supervisors. You know, our findings have been that, you know, during this time when there's high inflation and it's tough to hire personnel to city employment, that we need to make some targeted investments to improve salaries where we see that we're out of line with the market. And so $2 million going towards the Cub Union, particularly on top of cost of living adjustments. And then we're adding three positions to improve our cybersecurity work to make sure that we can stay up to date with security patches that, you know, help us to stay, you know, away from those vulnerabilities, which, of course, we experienced here with the ransomware attack back in 2018. That's the budget in a quick, about as quick as I can do it. I'm happy to take any questions from the group or go right to public testimony.
Thank you, Bob. We'll now move into public testimony. At this time, I'd like to go over the ground rules for this evening. As I said at the top, we want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard, and anyone who is disruptive or abusive may be asked to leave or be ejected from the virtual meeting. If you have signed up online in advance of this evening's meeting and are testifying virtually, you will be recognized by the Chair and unmuted by one of our moderators when it is your turn to speak. If you have not already registered to testify, you can do so at www.baltimorecitycouncil.com/testify, as seen on screen now. You may also use the hand raise function within WebEx or stay on the phone line. When it is your turn, you will have two minutes to speak. Our moderators will let you know when your time has expired. For those attending in person, please ensure you have signed up to speak at the table outside the Board of Estimates boardroom, which is right out there in the hallway. Please speak clearly into the microphone so that our interpreters and those watching at home or on WebEx can hear your remarks. Again, you will have two minutes, and our moderators will let you know when your time has expired. Finally, the purpose of this evening is for us to listen, so we do not intend to enter into dialogue with you when you speak, but we may ask you to clarify a point at any time. If you are intending to speak in person or virtually, we suggest that you do the following. Please state your first and last name and any affiliations before you speak so that you can be identified for the record. Please speak slowly and clearly. And when you are not speaking, please ensure you are on mute and keep side conversations in the room to a minimum. So with that, Mr. Stagman, we are going to start with Kim Truheart, Howard Park.
Good evening. My first issue is city pools are scheduled to open this weekend. I'm not sure, but the Pool at Liberty closed early last year because it did not have proper filtration. I'm wondering, will it open this weekend as previously scheduled? And I ask the question not just for my pool and my community, but it's across the city. If there's a pool that is not opening as scheduled Memorial Day, you need to tell us. And I ask that you inquire because I've sent texts to Wreckin Parks. I've not gotten a response. I think that's unconscionable. The budget presentation was too short and too top-level. It should have provided additional details. ARPA funds were a significant investment in Baltimore City. We see certain levels going to agencies. What's left and what is the plan for what's left? And why didn't it get presented by budget? Three, I'd really like to see a consolidated list of funding opportunities in the city. Right now, you've got to go to each agency department's website. You've got to dig through it. I think to make it beneficial for us, make it simplistic, user-friendly, that somebody would take the initiative, City Council President, and put the list together. I think that would only make sense. Unfortunately, I had my first ride in a Baltimore City ambulance when I had my stroke. I was conscious enough to realize that it was the worst ride I ever had. And the vehicle, it appeared as though it had no shocks, and that makes no sense. You know, I would like to think you're going to have a halfway comfortable ride, but it was not. Every bump, I felt, I was cognizant of what was going on, and it just didn't make sense. If we're getting an influx of EMS dollars, then I would think that we would want to upgrade those vehicles. And then lastly, police accountability is important. And for 10 years, I've been talking about civilian oversight and control. Now, we have a bill that you guys are debating, and it's the police accountability. I don't know how close we will get to true civilian oversight, but we need to get closer, and I'm expecting that the City Council is going to help us get there. As in the military, there's a civilian oversight component, the Secretaries of the Services. We need that here in the city. And you can say it's the mayor, but I think it needs to be citizens. And I think you can do it. I think there's time to do it. I believe that you have a whole month to finalize that bill and make it meaningful and impactful, and include young people on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Truheart. Glad that you're back here with us in City Hall. Do we have anyone from the mayor's office with us? Or BBMR? Anyone? BBMR? They left us. It happens. Ms. Truheart, someone from Council President Mosby's office is going to follow up with you tomorrow on your pool question, and make sure you get a timely answer. Thank you. Next up, we have Shaq from Reisterstown Station.
Good evening, Council President and distinguished City Council members. Part of me feels like what I'm doing now, what many of us are going to do, what history tells us, is it really doesn't mean much. We're going to come up here, we're going to give you these stories, we're going to tell you what's happening in communities. We're going to tell you that putting more money into police doesn't really make us safer. And what's going to happen is we're going to walk into the next fiscal year and won't nothing change, unless somebody's running for mayor and the entire country is calling for defunding the police, and it's politically expedient. That's the only time I've ever seen actual defunding of the police happen. In October this past year, I had a gun put to my head in West Baltimore, and I was robbed for everything that I had, down to my shoes and socks. I had to watch my mother cry and her sisters console her as my mother continued to say, "I'm so glad they didn't kill my son." And in a night where he was just out having fun, he could have become a statistic. And originally, I was upset with the guys who robbed me. But then I thought, well, maybe these guys needed housing. But we live in a city that for every dollar that's spent on police, we only spent 15 cents on housing. Maybe these guys needed substance abuse or mental health, anything. But we live in a city that for every dollar that's spent on policing, we only spend one cent on substance abuse and mental health. It hurts. It's illogical. And if I could just take a moment to speak particularly with the black people who are in the City Council, particularly the black men, I cannot, for the life of me, understand how year after year, we support the expansion of an institution that was created from slave patrols to literally limit the agency and on behalf of the state stow it the oppression of black people and black bodies. And 200 years later, 100 years later, we continue to do it. Policing does not make us safer. Those guys who robbed me, the police came after the fact.
Sir Shaq, I'm going to ask you to please try to wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The last thing I'll say is, in terms of safety, people need immediate responses. I know in the mayor's budget, they're bringing in some program that they tested in Weston District. I don't understand how we overlook all the black people in this city like we are us Baltimore brothers, Baltimore ceasefire beats not bullets, who are putting their lobs on the line every day to do the work of stopping violence before it happens in our city. I don't understand, for the life of me, how do we overlook all of those black people to bring in a program from another place? And with that, I'll close.
Thank you. Next up is Indigo from Green Mount West.
Hello, Council. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. My name's Indigo. I live at the Copycat Building in Green Mount West. I've lived in an arts collective there since 2015. For years, I've begged for helping me and my community. Our building is full of lead and asbestos, and there's not enough water pressure for us to wash our dishes sometimes. My fridge broke last year, and management ignored it, focusing instead on trying to evict me and my neighbors for speaking up. My landlord, Charles Langford, is unlicensed and has operated illegally for years. My landlord, Charles Langford, is unlicensed and has operated illegally for years. Nobody stopped him. District reps and senators have heard my story. It was on the front page of The Sun. We've called 311 hundreds of times. Nothing has been done and most of the code issues in the building aren't even documented. I can't move because there is no housing in my neighborhood I can afford. Plenty of housing is being built, but prices are comparable to New York or LA. The arts community is being torn apart and kicked out into the street by slum lords and speculators, and I see little happening to stop it. Police helicopters wake me up at night, shining lights in my bedroom windows. Cops in my neighborhood regularly shut down shows and block parties and anything that makes a joyful noise. Police cars loiter in parking lots and on street corners, reminding us we are being watched all the time. Last summer, my landlord called the cops multiple times to harass legal tenants he could not evict. Those tenants left soon after for their safety. More cops are not helping the situation. The money spent on police presence that makes us feel this way could be spent, instead, on safe and affordable housing. It could be spent on making sure that people like my landlord can't continue to operate this way. It could be spent on building our neighborhood back up. I don't understand why we're pouring money into control instead of into keeping our communities safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Samuel L. Snowden. Henson Garden Lakeside. Did I say that correct? Yes, sir.
I've got more to say, but play by the rules. Okay, my name is Sam Snowden. Past, past Vice President of Edna Gardens Lakeside, past Treasurer of Edna Gardens Lakeside. Um, Ms. Ramos is now currently my councilwoman. I had Mary Pat Clark. Spent 34 years in the US Postal Service as an investigator for the state of Maryland. That's why I retired as superintendent. Before that, I was in the Air Force and I worked F-100s. I was wounded, but not in combat for some other reason. But, uh, I've been in many campaigns since then. I retired. Uh, don't, I mean Kurt Smoak, when he became the mayor of Baltimore. And of course, uh, uh, what's his name was the unelected mayor acting at the time. I called Mr. What's his name's office about this, uh, program for training people. Several times haven't received a phone call back. You know, I'm telling the truth. Um, Gundannon's campaign, Kathleen Kennedy's campaign, when she had it at Smith Avenue, wouldn't listen to us. And that's when Steele and Ehrlich took over. Uh, Kathy Pew, she's out in a halfway house, I think. She's taking Larry Young's place, I understand. Unfortunately, Larry had a few problems. Um, I just want to say, I've called down here many times. People won't call you back. I've been homeless for 25 months, uh, through no fault of my own. My house caught on fire, it's 3705 Delamita. They boarded it up. Catholic charities gave me money to go out to the Love Motel on Lockraven in Joppa, AKA Roach Motel. I would not sleep in the bed. And of course, two O'Malley's, uh, heard about it and they got me up here at the, uh, place off of 1100 East 33rd, uh, Dunkin' Donuts.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up.
Okay. I've got much more to say, but just return some phone calls once in a while. I pay my property tax, you know? Doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Hannah Young. Hannah Young, Charles Village, Harwood.
Hi, I'm Hannah. Thank you for listening to us tonight. Um, I live in Harwood. I'm going to echo a lot of the things you've already heard and will continue to hear tonight, but they are important to hear. I'm concerned about increasing BPD's budget at the expense of schools, housing and health. Of course, I want to see more investment in agencies that are dangerously underfunded. This is the only proven way to decrease violence, which I know is a major concern for many Baltimore residents. But I'm also concerned by the inequitable investment in an institution that has proven itself to be financially and a financial and criminal liability that does little to build healthy and sustainable communities. I'm concerned if BPD continues to sustain power and control public safety, that transformative alternatives, which threaten the foundations of the power, this powerful institution, will never be allowed to thrive regardless of their funding. We cannot invest in alternatives while continuing to prop up a dying institution. They're simply incompatible. We should be committing immediately to divestment strategies if at the very least refusing to increase a police budget that already earns more per capita than any of the other 72 largest cities in the country. I urge you to think critically about the future of public safety. Look at the data, performance, culture and failed reforms over several decades that center obedience, not safety. Stop asking residents to sacrifice building healthy communities for an institution that actively harms them. The organizations represented here today and the people have given you clear pass forward for how to equitably address the budget. Please stop neglecting to hear them. We all know nothing substantial will change with next year's budget at this point. Why do we have, only have one opportunity to give input at this point in the process? This is a performative measure and needs to change to reflect what so many here have told you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, um, I just want to address one point in terms of the opportunity to provide public input. Um, there's actually two taxpayer nights each year. Um, one is hosted by the Board of Estimates, uh, which Council President is a member of. Uh, it's a five-person entity and includes the mayor, uh, the city solicitor, the director of DPW, uh, and the comptroller for the city. Um, and while the, okay, I just wanted for everyone's benefit so that, you know, that folks listening at home know um, that there are, you know, two opportunities to provide that input. Um, the, it is the Board of Estimates that, uh, develops the budget. However, the Board of Estimates is controlled by the mayor's office, um, because they have three votes out of five on Board of Estimates. So it is technically they that put that budget together each year, but essentially that is the mayor, uh, in his administration. Uh, next up, we have Tamara Walshi. Did I say that right? Ridgely's Delight?
Good evening. My name is Tammy Walski and I live in Ridgely's Delight. I'd like to share with you two different stories I've encountered from two different people I know from different times in my life. Both stories regarding the same issue of mental and behavioral health crisis, but from opposite ends of the issue. An old friend I reconnected with this past March had since graduated with a master's in social work, obtained her social work license and was working as a mental and behavioral health crisis first responder in New York City. She and another responder provide mental health engagement, intervention and follow-up support to help people connect to long-term treatment services. This service is an alternative to relying on police in response to mental and behavioral health crises. Then two weeks ago, I heard a story on the opposite end of the spectrum, where an acquaintance who lives in Baltimore City shared the story of her son experiencing a mental health crisis and assaulting her while spending time with her. She called the Baltimore City Crisis Response Line as part of a designated emergency response plan formulated if something like this happened, but was informed there was no mental health agency adequately equipped to deal with the situation and that the Baltimore Police Department would be sent out to respond. She declined a police response because she didn't want her son to go to prison. I know both these people via Jewish communities I've been involved in in different states I've lived in. I know that this must be a reflection of how all communities within our city, state and country face similar health issues, issues that require comprehensive, community-based solutions. We already have trained professionals that can adequately respond to mental health crises within our communities as well. It's just that there's little existing infrastructure to connect people with the help that they need. When looking at the budget breakdown, I saw that for every dollar Baltimore Police Department gets, substance use and mental health gets one cent. This is not a budget that builds infrastructure and programming that the people of Baltimore City need to thrive. Our city budget needs to allocate money from the BPD budget to community-based mental health services and crisis response. Police cannot be the one-stop shop for the variety of crises and situations that individuals face every day. We need a variety of emergency response services that ensure that the root cause of the issue at hand gets addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge Nina Themelis and Michael Huber from Mayor Brandon Scott's office are participating virtually. Uh, next up, we have Liz Simon-Higgs, Riverside.
Good evening. Thanks for being here and thanks for listening to us. I think that's maybe one of the most important things we can do these days. Um, my name is Liz Simon-Higgs. I live in the Riverside neighborhood in South Baltimore. Um, I'm here, I guess, on two counts. One is because I, I share my fellow citizens' concerns about how much money is going to police, in part because it just means that that money isn't going towards meeting residents' needs. And I would urge each of you here to think about, I'm sure you hear countless complaints daily from, from residents, uh, citizens of your district and, and what their needs are. And so I would think about, you know, for me, like my kids are educated in city schools. Um, I am lucky to actually have a garden plot and I wish that this were an option for way more people. Um, the experience of getting your hands in the dirt, growing your own food, being able to actually meet your own needs and have agency is really powerful. Um, separately from how money gets spent, I just want to address revenue for a second. I sit on the city's Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. And so I get kind of a window into what's going on with, um, how taxes are collected and how people appeal them. And as you know, the rate here is super, super high. And so if anybody thinks their property is over assessed by, you know, five bucks, they're going to come and appeal it. Um, this has created kind of a, a crisis in Estat, um, which the city actually funds half of, as you may know. So this is, this is really relevant and it also, um, I would urge you to look at all the, the tax breaks, the, the property tax breaks that go to developers. These deprive us of huge amounts of revenue that could absolutely go towards meeting our residents' needs. And so I feel like we're just missing a huge chunk of change. Um, and it's, and it's, and it increases the inequitability for what we, um, as folks who live here pay. So thank you for your time and I hope that, uh, the budget shifts.
Thank you. J. Lo Scott, J. Lo Scott, Charles Village.
Hi, uh, good evening. My name is J. Lo Scott. I'm a resident of Charles Village. Uh, I work as a community health advocate at the Bayview Hospital. Many of the patients that I see have disabilities. Most are poor and every single one of them have housing needs, food needs and suffer from not being able to have reliable transportation. I tell you this because residents of the city have desperate housing needs. Yet for every one dollar, as you guys know, is being spent on BPD, homeless resources only get 12 cents and housing and development resources only get 15 cents. What good is the supposed safety that BPD offers if people don't have homes to go to? A city resident and a believer that we can and must do better, um, I support and stand with CJ, SJ and Organizing Black to demand the following. $100 million be cut from BPD's budget and invest into black communities. $30 million on the Community Wellness Trust Fund is built and governed by a participatory budgeting process and pleased be removed entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance abuse, sex, work, homelessness and all crimes of poverty. I urge you to listen to what people are saying tonight and vote down this budget as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Berger, Charles Village, JUFJ.
Good evening. My name is Zach Berger. I'm a resident of Charles Village and a proud member of Jews United for Justice. I am a primary care physician in Baltimore. Many of my patients are poor African-American residents of East Baltimore or undocumented immigrants, many of whom do not speak English. They are often harassed and terrorized by the BPD. Crime is a socially determined category and we know which people are praised for amassing wealth in the backs of the poor and who are to be, who are blamed for doing what they need to survive. In a word, the police are a violent instrument of control and are not a necessary or sufficient instrument of justice or equity. It is a great disappointment that my vulnerable patients will be put at additional risk of interaction with the police with, if this budget is passed. The Baltimore police get over $500 million a year and we're going to give them even more money? I stand with the recommendations made today by CJ, SJ and Organizing Black to divest from police center, approach and center community health, mental health, jobs, housing and food, and a data-based effective violence prevention, of which there are many examples in this city, ignored by this budget. My patients thank you for putting their needs, not the police's needs, first. They value their physical safety as much as anyone, but they know, as many recent tragic events have shown us, that more police funding does not mean safer living. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Baynard Woods, Seton Hill.
Hey y'all, how you doing? This is weird for me. I've only been here as a reporter before covering events like this and, and not speaking as a citizen, but I'm compelled to come up here as a citizen resident of Baltimore tonight to talk to you because I know you're sitting there thinking, when I sign this budget, when I vote for this budget, rather, uh, the police, you know, they're going to be reformed if we give them more money. You have to tell yourselves that in order to justify what you're doing, but I wrote a book about the Baltimore Police Department and it's not true. The Gun Trace Task Force was their response to your reform. It was a counterinsurgency designed to play the exact thing you're doing right now, to increase the power that the police department was gaining and to use it against us. They weren't just robbing from the streets. They were robbing taxpayer money with their overtime. And how much are you going to budget for the next complaint from the 300 officers that were named today? Um, you know, to pay for the, the complaints against them, the settlements. And that's the fast violence that you support with this budget. But you're also supporting slow violence in Popleton. You're using eminent domain, this city council, to make the, to force the Edie family from their home, their generational home and give it to a private developer and a stalled development. This budget's supporting both fast violence against our residents with what you call proactive policing and is a war on the residents of the city. And you're embracing the slow violence of choking Popleton out while waiting for some saver, savior from New York to save us. So change your mind on this budget, shut it down now, rethink it in favor of the community and not in favor of bringing violence to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole King, Nicole King, Seton Hill, Organize Popleton.
Hello, um, I'm Nicole King. I'm a resident of Seton Hill and a professor at UMBC, so I'm going to get a little more nerdy. Um, I've been working with Popleton residents, um, for the past couple of years. If equitable neighborhood development is a pillar of this budget, I want to ask if that will apply to Popleton now. In 2004, an amendment to the Popleton Urban Renewal Plan was introduced in the city council to take 526 properties within the 14-acre parcel in Popleton by using eminent domain. Records from 2004's city council hearings show that 132 of those properties were occupied with black families, 39 of them with homeowners. One of those 39 homeowners was the Edie family who were fighting for their home, were fighting for their home in 2004 and are fighting for their home in 2022. The city council ignored the residents' request to have their properties removed back in 2004 and they're ignoring residents today. Between 2004 and 2012, the city spent over $12 million relocating residents and tearing down properties in Popleton while nothing was built by the developers. Then in 2015, the city council approved a $58 million TIF for the La Cite developers. And in 2019, the developers finally opened two luxury apartments with 262 units. In February of 2020, the Edie family and their neighbors received condemnation notices from the mayor and the city council of Baltimore. And that is y'all. This was amidst a global pandemic and y'all continued to move forward with taking black families' homes for an under- Developers do not own this city. Cops do not own this city. Residents do. Legacy residents, like those sitting right there, that's who you work for. That's who we elected you to work for.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it, please.
My last line, sir. So work with residents in Poppleton if equitable neighborhood development is indeed a pillar of your budget. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Valena Pappas Brown, Canton. I apologize.
Good evening to my council members, Zeke Kellin and Ms. Ramos. The rest of you, I will say, bless your heart. I wrote this in last time as testimony at the last taxpayer night virtually. Hello, I'm Valeria Pappas Brown. I've lived in Baltimore City for 27 years. I've raised my family here for all the time I've lived in Canton. There's been Canton Middle School, Canton 230, and it has been a middle school, and it had been educating the youth here in Baltimore. But for a large part of that time, it has been empty, no school. The school is still there, and my fear, knowing that the gentrification is alive and well in my area, that the city preserve this historic school as a school forever. Because in my area, there are lots of young couples having children, and we would like to keep them there and not have them go to the county. So I guess my, and this is, I've done it with, you know, state, I've tried to do it with the city council, to put Canton Middle School, it's a 1925, it's built in 1925, as a historical monument in Canton, and make it a school again. And it was a recreation center, too. My son used to play softball out of that recreation center, Fort View. So I'm asking, maybe you can put a little bit of money that you were thinking about giving the police and turn that building into a school again, because it is much needed and will be needed in the future. And we must think about the future of our children, not what is going to, you know, pay the bill today. So we have to think about the future, and we have to use some of that money that we give to the Baltimore police and put it into that school, because it's much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridge Demas, Bolton Hill, 1199 SEIU.
Good afternoon. My name is Bridge Demas. I'm the political organizer with 1199 SEIU, United Healthcare Workers East. We are the largest healthcare workers' union in the United States with over 5,000 members in Baltimore City alone. We are also members of CJ, SJ, and support all of the demands made by Organizing Black and CJ, SJ. I will speak about a few of them that are most important to healthcare workers. Ms. Anita Handy is an 1199 member who works at Johns Hopkins Hospital. She said, "I have a 19-year-old about to graduate high school. When I envision a city where she can thrive, I see clean streets, I see affordable and livable housing, I see a fire department with more funding, I see no more gun violence, and I see more opportunities for our youth, including parks and rec centers and well-funded public schools." She continued, "These are the services that are required to create truly safe communities. Sadly, our city keeps raising the police budget while not funding the services that can create the Baltimore I envision. I spoke with another member yesterday, and she told me, 'I'm the mother of a six-year-old son who has a disability. People with disabilities are at a much higher risk of being victims of police violence.' That is a really scary fact. I want my son to be safe and to have access to the services that will help him succeed.'" 1199 members are outraged by the current budget proposal, in which for every dollar Baltimore City would spend on police, we would spend only cents on services that increase public safety and uplift underserved, overpoliced Black and Brown communities. This budget includes an insulting allocation of just one cent towards essential healthcare services. People with mental illnesses and substance dependence need preventative healthcare so they don't end up in a hospital or a long-term care facility. There is a huge short-staffing crisis in healthcare, causing workers to work mandatory overtime, which leads to burnout, missed time with their families, dangerous working conditions, and longer wait times for patients. To reduce short-staffing, we must raise wages and fund workforce training. This can be done through increasing funding for healthcare service in the budget and creating a $30 million community trust fund so Baltimoreans can participate in the budgeting process and insist on higher wages for healthcare workers.
Fred, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up.
We demand the council reject any budget that increases police funding at the expenses of healthcare workers and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gwen DeBoi, JUFJ.
Hi. I live in Mount Washington. I, as well as my four children, were educated in Baltimore Public School System, and I practiced internal medicine at Sinai Hospital for 30 years. Too many of my patients lost their children to gun violence. I urge you to reduce the amount of money we are investing in police and divert it to programs that are likely to improve the lives of our children: decent housing, education, recreation, social services. While our city population has plummeted, the amount we budget for police keeps climbing. Now, $560 million is proposed, and the per-person figure keeps rising without seeing an impact on serious crime. In 2018, 83% of arrests were made for nonviolent crimes, where Black people were two and a half times as likely to be arrested as whites. For disorderly conduct, Blacks were arrested seven times higher than for whites. This is not new. In 1920, the Urban League did surveys and found Blacks disproportionately arrested for minor infractions. Harvard Law Professor Natapoff describes arresting people for low-level crimes sends them down a devastating personal path. In addition to overexposing Black people to police violence, being swept into the criminal justice system causes many to lose jobs, makes it hard to find housing, lose wages during incarceration, and hurts families. This is what overpolicing can do. Until the culture of policing changes, I believe we will see more violence in this city. We should be investing in decent housing for all and removing lead paint. Baltimore is second only to Detroit in numbers of evicted households, and many of these homes are substandard, contaminated with lead paint and mold infestations. We should identify situations where police are not appropriate and send professionals to identify mental health problems. That is what happens in Eugene, Oregon, with the decades-old Kahoots program, which dispatches mobile teams consisting of an EMT, nurse, and crisis worker through the 911 system working with the police. In 2017, they received 25,000 calls, only 250 required police. I support investment in Black communities, $30 million Community Wellness Trust Fund to govern through a participatory budgetary process and removal of police from mental health distress problems. We should reject the police budget with continuous dysfunctional racist model of how to protect Baltimoreans, and reimagine a system where residents in San Antonio Winchester are offered the same protections as we expect to receive in Mount Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Fitzgerald, Communities United and JUFJ.
Chairman Costello, President Mosby, members of city council. I'm Dr. Terry Fitzgerald, a voting resident of Mount Washington and a participant in Communities United and JUFJ. I am a physician specializing in addiction medicine. I want to speak specifically, as many have, to the very large portion of the operating budget that is proposed for the Baltimore City Police Department, and urge this budget be cut by 25%. Baltimore police budget has continuously grown for decades. Adjusting for inflation, police spending increased more than 170% from 1965 to 2005, while the city population continuously decreased. By fiscal year 2020, spending for BPD reached $840 per resident, more than the per capita spending in the next 72 largest cities in the U.S. This could even be $100 higher in the proposed budget. If spending on police made us safe, then Baltimore would be one of the safest places in the United States. Let's face it, we spend too much on policing in Baltimore, and we are not getting our money's worth, because the solution to crime is not simply more guns and police. Moving 25% of the police budget to services for the community would bring our police spending in line with spending in other cities and would release funds for activities and institutions to repair the city. This budget contains some good initiatives involving nonarmed people in the police department and some forward-looking crime prevention services, but these do not change the underlying problem, viewing public safety as something that grows out of quasi-military activity. We need to rethink public safety and rebuild it from the ground up. We must declare this to be a first priority and actively involve the community in long-term discussion to develop a strategic plan. There are many grassroots organizations that are already working on this and need to be heard. We need you to commit to recreate public safety for the safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm signed up online, because I didn't trust that system, so when you get to it, you can see my name, you can skip it.
Yes, sir. Next up, Leanna Harrison, CASA.
Good evening, council members. My name is Leanna Harrison. I'm the research and policy analyst with CASA in Baltimore and Central Maryland, also a resident of the Mount Vernon area. CASA is the largest member-led immigrant advocacy and direct services organization in the mid-Atlantic, with more than 16,000 all-time members here in the city of Baltimore alone. I'm here today to uplift the voices of many of our Baltimore city members who stand with CJ, SJ, and Organizing Black in demanding a budget that addresses community needs, reduces overpolicing, and real allocates funds for direct services for our Baltimore community. Baltimore city residents pay $956 per capita for police, more than anywhere else in America. Instead of overpolicing our Black and Brown communities, these funds could be invested in a municipal ID program for the city, better health access, benefits, and insurance for all in Baltimore regardless of their immigration status. As a former Baltimore City school teacher, I'm disheartened to see such low funds allocated to education in Baltimore compared to those allocated to the police department. While the city allocates more, I mean, excuse me, almost 40% more in funding to police spending, Baltimore City schools continue to underperform and continue to under-deliver for our children, because our city would rather invest in overpolicing our children than investing in their futures. Our schools need funding for English language support and counseling services. CASA members demand better for our community and city, and stand in support with CJ, SJ, and Organizing Black to demand that BPD budget is cut and funds are reallocated into direct services for Black and Brown communities, and the removal of police entirely from the response to mental health distress, substance abuse, sex work, and homelessness. We urge you to vote down the police budget as it stands and invest in community programs, health programs, and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaflu Kaflu, Communities United.
Good afternoon, council members, President Mosby, and my council member, Zeke Kellin. So I want to bring up two things here. One is the morality, the unfairness, and how unjust the Baltimore city budget is, and then also think about why is it so expensive to police in Baltimore City? Very important question. Just some background, my name is Kaflu Kaflu, and I'm a base building organizer at Communities United. Communities United is a grassroots membership organization that is working to fight for more affordable housing, jobs, and harm reduction programs. For the fourth year in a row, we've released an independent analysis of the city's proposed budget. Once again this year, the city has devoted the largest chunk of its general fund to the police department.
Sir, can you just, yeah, like, two inches off? Yeah, yeah.
My bad. Got to give my minutes back, though. Got to give my time back.
No, you're good. We'll save your time, but yeah.
Talk, it'll pick up.
Yeah, okay. Right where your head's good. Thank you.
So once again this year, the city has devoted, just better, the largest chunk of its general fund to the police department and sheriff's department while underinvesting in public schools, affordable housing, jobs programs, and health resources. The BPD has consistently received an outsized percentage of the city's general fund, 26% in FY23 preliminary budget, compared to investment priorities such as funding public schools, housing and community development at 2%, recreation and parks at 2%, Office of Homeless Services at 1%, and most outrageously, substance abuse and mental health at .1%. So as some others have pointed out, in the budget analysis that we provided, for every dollar spent on the police department, the city chose to spend 61 cents to Baltimore City Public Schools, 15 cents to housing and community development, 12 cents to the Office of Homeless Services, 11 cents to parks and recreation, and 1 penny, 1 penny, to substance abuse disorder and mental health. Now, the other question is, why is it so expensive to police in Baltimore City? And that's a question I have for everybody. For example, a comparable city like Milwaukee has the same kind of stats, same population, but half the budget. It's about $300 million. This is about $700 million. So the question is, where's this money going? Why is it so expensive to police in Baltimore City? Baltimore already spends more per resident than the 72 largest cities in the country. We spend more per person than Washington, D.C., New Orleans, New York, St. Louis, and Chicago, and yet have a lower ratio of police to residents. This budget increases spending to over $950 per resident. This city's level of police funding is simply not sustainable. Again, I ask, why is it so much more expensive to police in Baltimore? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Teresa Reuter, Communities United. Did I say that correctly?
I'm just going to say that everyone who spoke tonight, everyone, I hope that you all keep this to your heart and reflect to the whole city and the whole nation, the testimonies that are given here tonight, so powerful, so truthful, so needy. There is no excuse for things not changing. There is no excuse after what I've heard tonight and the last testimony, every testimony here tonight. There's no excuse for you not defunding the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Edie, Poppleton Now, Communities Association.
Good evening, everyone on the council, and thank you for having us come out and speak our truths for Baltimore City. I would like to start off first by saying that Baltimore City has and currently implements rules, regulations, policies, and practices that strip real property, generational wealth, culture, and history away from its legacy Black residents to distribute to others, gentrifying our neighborhoods. That adaptation of urban renewal plans and the exercise of eminent domain for many neighborhoods in Baltimore City has meant starvation of resources, economic and social disinvestments, and ultimate destruction. Your neighborhoods can be next. In the community of Poppleton, we are suffering through eminent domain, where the city has come in, taken properties that were not vacant, that were fully occupied by homeowners and property owners, to give over to investors from New York City. So you have removed all of these legacy homeowners from our neighborhood. culture, and history away from its legacy Black residents to distribute to others, gentrifying our neighborhoods. That adaptation of urban renewal plans and the exercise of empty domain for many neighborhoods in Baltimore City has meant starvation of resources, economic and social disinvestments, and ultimate destruction. Your neighborhoods can be next. In the community of Poppleton, we are suffering through empty domain, where the city has come in, taken properties that were not vacant, that were fully occupied by homeowners and property owners, to give over to investors from New York City. So you have removed all of these legacy homeowners from our neighborhood, tore down the houses, and left blight, more blight that y'all say that you, why you needed to come in with this urban renewal plan from the beginning. And now we have more blight. You talk about public safety, we are more afraid to walk through the neighborhood that you didn't used to be afraid of, because now you have all this vacant, unmanaged land that the city now owns. Now with darkness, we are more afraid now. And so what I'm looking for is that the city, stop with your policies, come into these neighborhoods, allow community to be a part of these plans. We live here. This is our city, not these developer cities. This is our city, this is my neighborhood. Poppleton is where my father was raised up, and I was raised up, and I raised my children and grandchildren. And we want to remain in the city. When the mayor's talking about we're losing Baltimore residents, y'all are pushing us out. We're not going by choice. You're forcing people out of the neighborhood. And then you talk about why is no investment, because the city did not do the investment. Y'all caused the blight, now what you gonna do about it? Thank you.
Next up, we have John Monford, Remington. Did I say that correctly?
My name's John Monford, and tomorrow I'm moving in in Remington after nine years in San Francisco. I grew up out in the county, but I'm proud to finally be able to call myself a resident of Baltimore City. I want to first apologize for wearing gym clothes to city council tonight. I only saw the call from Organizing Black to show up tonight a few hours ago, and I wanted to come uplift the call to divest from Baltimore police and invest in Baltimore communities. Every word of testimony tonight has been crystal clear in calling on you to reject this bloated police budget. We all know that there are gangs in BPD perpetrating violence against Black people in Baltimore. A number of them have pled guilty or been convicted in federal court or will soon stand trial for their crimes against the people of Baltimore. What would happen if you flex your political muscle and send this budget back to the mayor? You could fund, you could fund a universal-led abatement program, you could fund higher teacher salaries or a universal jobs program, you could fund bus rapid transit and repair our crumbling water and wastewater infrastructure, you could fund community land trusts to protect from displacement Black families who have been here for generations, you could fund reparations for Black Baltimoreans who have been harmed by state and city policy and practice for centuries. Today, the state's attorney released under court order a list of some 300 Baltimore police officers who cannot be called to testify in court due to integrity issues. One of those officers is Catherine Philippou, who helped cover up BPD's wrongful shooting and near murder of Keith Davis Jr. For the crime of surviving a storm of dozens of bullets, Keith Davis Jr. is being prosecuted based on the false and conflicting testimony of officers lying to protect their own, and we believe that he will soon be free. City council can change course and start to make right the wrongs committed against Black people in Baltimore. I urge you to reject this budget, send it back to the mayor, and do right by the people of Baltimore City.
Certainly the award for civic engagement, showing up to testify, to hearing the day before you move in. So, thank you. Next up, we have Ashwin Iyengar, better way, Waverly? Ashwin. Okay. If Ashwin comes, we'll come back to them. Next up is Francina Walker, Poppleton Now, Community Association.
Hello, everyone. I am Francina Walker from Poppleton, and I want to know about our test money, our test bond that the New York, that the city gave to the New York developer. And I also want to know about our wrecks and our parks and our pools. They have been closed for over 20 years, and y'all insist on building more juvenile jails, stop and invest in our recreation, parks, and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was Ms. Walker, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Dan Zink from Waverly? Dan? Okay. Come back if Dan comes back. Patricia Nickerson, Poppleton Now, Community Association.
My name is Patricia Nickerson. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk, I want to talk about Poppleton Now, the parking is awful. We have two big high-rise buildings. One sits right in front of Vine Street, and it is horrible. Then we have another one that sits on the other side that's facing Lexington Street, and the parking is terrible. And I also want to talk about what y'all are going to be offering. We need stuff in the community for the kids. I'm from Virginia, but I've been here since I left the military in 1975. I raised my kids on Vine Street. It was always a baseball field. It was really nice, and I really like the city to live here, but I don't like what I see, displacing people, treating us like we doesn't matter. Only time we matters is when voting time come and people come to the neighborhood, get us to vote, try to vote for them, for y'all, and then you fizzler out like Alco Salka Plus. We don't hear anything, but we need parking. People speed up and down Vine Street, no regards for the elder. I suffered with three strokes and cancer. When I go to my appointments, when I come home, I don't feel like walking four, five blocks to get to my house because our developer is charging people to park in his garage. So we have to do what we have to do to get a park in front of our house, and it shouldn't be. So I'm asking for residential parking. I was dealing with this since last year with the parking people, but we haven't heard anything. So if y'all say that you care about us, show us that you care about us. If not, let us know, and we'll move on to the next person that's going to not promise us they're going to do stuff and not do it. We can vote for somebody else.
Thank you. We have a Jure Lucas, Organizing Black, Patterson Park. Did I say that right?
Hello. Hi. My name is Jure Lucas, and I am a resident of the Patterson Park neighborhood in District 1. I am a teacher, a musician of 14 years, and a member of the Black trans community. Mayor Brandon Scott, wherever he is, upon your transition into office, many of my colleagues and mentors on the Arts and Culture Committee spent time and care in advocating for economically accessible and class diverse artist spaces, equitable arts funding for Black and Black LGBTQ+ art spaces, and creative programming and resources for youth that would change the face and well-being of the city. Instead of investing our city's funds into the creative livelihood of its people, you all are yet again increasing the Baltimore City Police Department budget. Instead of choosing to pour into a city where our children are held by a creative future that expands possibilities, you all are investing in their arrest. As a Black musician and arts teacher, it's insulting to see the lack of care and effort put towards the vision that was created by the task force and the countless artists who trusted them to represent us. It's insulting to see homelessness criminalized when homes for artists and creative workers are completely inaccessible in this city. Many of my fellow Black artists have no space or resources to be artists in this city, to create or to celebrate Black culture in our communities. It's insulting to see our kids overpoliced instead of provided accessible spaces to explore the many creative gifts they naturally hold. Instead, this police department literally shoots down our kids in the street. Rest and power to Darnell Rochester, a bright light of the Black LGBTQ+ community who had his whole life in front of him. We demand that these be reallocated to the people of this city via community programming that puts this city on the map and gives it life. Invest in our artists. Invest in the people who made this city this city. Invest in our legacy residents. With every dollar you invest in police, you drain the lifeblood of this city. To be very frank, sir, on your phone, I see more bravery and courage in my classrooms from nine-year-olds than I see in this chamber. We deserve better. You say you hear us, but we need to see change, or your words are just that, words. Lies. I hope you all hear us.
Next up, Rob Farrell, Organizing Black, in Park Heights.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rob Farrell. I'm a resident of Park Heights, and I'm a senior organizer with Organizing Black. You've heard our stories, you've heard our stats, you've heard our demands. Here we are yet again, another Taxpayers' Night where residents come to testify to defund the police and to invest in the basic needs of our communities. Here we are yet again with another wholly undemocratic budget process, where the mayor unilaterally sets the budget priorities for the city in November without any input or consultation from the residents of the city. Between November and May, the priorities are set, sent to the city agencies, city agencies develop their budgets, the Department of Finance reviews them, collates the budget, sends the recommended budget to the Board of Estimates, and then finally to the city council. And again, all without any consultation from the residents, from the people. This process frankly is a sham. Taxpayers' Night is an insult to the residents of Baltimore City, to have a process where people are invited to speak and at the very end knowing full well you won't make any changes. It just might be worse than having no process at all, frankly. So I'm here to demand a participatory process, a process that is accountable to the people. If you're on the side of democracy, on the side of the people, you need to trust the people to lead themselves. Source the priorities of the budget directly from the people. Hold a Taxpayers' Night to account for how you wasted our tax money at the end. That's what democracy, transparency, and accountability would look like, and it's also something clearly y'all know nothing about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Puyan Abasi, Unite Here Local 7. Did I say that correct? Puyan Abasi. Okay. Next up, Teresa White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have about five things I want to point out to everybody. The first thing I want to talk about is inmates, when they are released from the jail, they had done their time, and I feel like it should be at least two inmates hard mandatory on every job in Baltimore City. They serve their time, they should not be turned down, they should be in every store, every department, I don't care what they did, they serve their time, it's time for them to have a job and get a piece just like you. Number two, for a handicapped person as I am, think that when you go buy a car or house, that it should be where I can record that person, every piece of paper that's given to me, everything that they say and who they are, they're saying what they're saying, because sometimes I don't understand, and after I sign the paper, it's something else. They change the story. Okay. Number three, every church, even small church, should have a shelter home for the homeless people. You're taking our money, you're paying your gas less than, you're paying your water, you're paying your rent, lease, whatever. We are too. So if you can't have shelter for them, you shouldn't need to be open, every church, little church, big church, mean size, I don't care, all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Wait a minute, I'm saying thank you to them. Number four, doors are closed at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. Stop the crime. I don't think anybody should be on the street after 9:00. The fan on the commercial on TV is saying, "Do you know where your children are?", but do you know where you are? There should be nobody on the street corner, on the street, heard, walking after 9:00. That's my, that's the way I feel. Stop the crime.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Say what? Say what?
I'm asking you to please wrap up.
Okay. Number, the last one, housekeeping. I used to work for the state of Maryland for 40 years. Now, I am a housekeeping worker. I am wiping toilets down at this time of the bars, and I only get paid $15 an hour for four hours. I can catch the bars, but I take this, I do this job, and I feel like we should be paying more money than $15, because I'm wiping behind people when you wipe down toilets. Thank you.
Thank you. Lightell, so... Lydell Hills, we didn't. Was that that just, ma'am, what was your name? Okay. Lydell Hills, Truth of Power. Lydell Hills. Oh, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Hello, my name is Lydell. How y'all doing? Good to see you, good to see people. But my name is Lydell Hills. I'm a pioneer of Truth of Power and a member of Organizing Black, residing in Bullock's District. I was hoping to see you here today, but first, I want to be able to thank City Council, and I want to be able to thank the people of Baltimore City, actually, because for this opportunity to be able to share my thoughts and the opportunities I've been granted personally to be able to craft programming that supports communities across Baltimore City. And I feel like we and I often come here talking about what's negative about the plans and what I want, what I hope to shift our focus to is what actually can happen if y'all was to. And yes, I do want to see a hundred million dollars defunded from BPD, but I want to see that investment into the Community Wellness Fund, and I hope to shed some light on what can happen if we was to do that. And so essentially, I've been grateful for, over the last three or four years, to experiment, to do work in Baltimore City and connect to Baltimore City's youth, to be able to see what's going on as a neighbor in Baltimore City with folks around Central East or West Side Baltimore, Southwest, being along MLK Corridor and all these different places. And in my work and just living out here, originally from Brooklyn, New York, but when I came out here for school as a student myself, Baltimore City has embraced me and vice versa, and it's allowed me this opportunity to be able to learn more about what I can do out in this city, what I can do with my life. And also, the greatest success throughout all of my mistakes and challenges as I've been growing and working through this has been seeing the young people that have prevailed and have stuck with us and who have been persistent. Three that stick out, and I'll leave anonymity, but one student who stayed vigilant and interested in all the different aspects of community organizing and actually inspired some of the work with the Trauma and Form Care Task Force. So I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Another student who just sent me a track the other day. He's a shy, shy kid. And I, just to think that like four years ago, he was just a poet that everyone in the school knew was great and phenomenal, but all he needed was that extra little push and those opportunities to be able to be making tracks. And now he's like writing raps and doing everything on his own. And then Eric, another young man who just like has struggled with discipline, but overall has like, just been super passionate, has thrived when he's had the opportunity to mentor other young, other youth that going forward is elementary and being able to just see opportunities for doing social work out in the city.
Lydell, I'm going to ask you to, to please start to wrap up. Thank you.
And so what I want to be able to do, or what I want to be able to speak on, the young people in Baltimore City have asked for police accountability. They've asked for less SROs and investments in mental health care, mental health professionals. They want to be able to see fun activities being brought to their schools. They want to be able to have the resources. They want to have a good lunch and not be reminded that they're on route to jail by looking outside their windows and seeing the bars on their windows. So these are things I've reflected and gotten from just casual conversations with the young people in Baltimore City who are a promise, who are a future. And the community organizers, all the people who came out here today who are consistently bringing to you the issues that are going on in the city. These leaders are already creating a better Baltimore. And so if y'all was to, you know, give us that hundred million dollars, it'd be much appreciated. Just give us the money and see what we can do.
Thank you. Ruth Smith, Radnor Winston, Jews United for Justice.
Good evening, council members. I'm Rabbi Ruth Smith from Radnor Winston in the Fourth District, and I'm testifying on behalf of Jews United for Justice, which organizes more than sixteen hundred people in Baltimore City to support social, racial, and economic justice. I'm speaking to amplify the demands that you've heard many times now from the Campaign for Justice Safety Jobs Coalition and from Organizing Black. And I also want to amplify the concern that the budget process, that the public testimony comes at the end of the process and not the beginning. As a chaplain at the, at a local hospital, I, one of my team members, are present every week when doctors tell a family that their loved one has been killed by a bullet. I also sit at the bedside with mothers watching the life drain from their son. Comforted. Men grieving the death of the mother of their two children. Last saw her lying motionless in a pool of her own blood. Our citizens are literally being killed in our streets. This is not a time for business as usual. The real question is why are there so much shooting? I believe it's because of a lack of options and despair for the future. The hundred million dollars that you've heard being requested could lead to a new direction for our city. Our young people need optimistic expectations in order to have positive aspirations. This money buys opportunity and it buys hope. And it buys a way out of this cycle of doom in which we now find ourselves. The social problems that we face can't be policed away. This City Council has the opportunity to reprioritize funding that can stop this cycle of violence that is killing Black and Brown people in this city.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up your comments.
The community is advocating for their priorities. We should support them.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anyone who is physically present in the room with us who wanted to testify and did not sign up? Signed up online?
Okay, come on up. What's your name and neighborhood or organization, please?
Carly Maddash, and I live in Medfield. My City Council member seems to be absent tonight. Okay, thank you. And shout out to Odette Ramos because she takes care of a lot of the issues near my district, and I appreciate that. Okay. This is my first time attending an event like this. And the reason I was hesitant to come in person is because I have an autoimmune disorder. I have a chronic illness, and people here without masks present a risk to my health. And I know that this is serious because last year I had a bowel obstruction that needed emergency care, and I was not able to go to my normal hospital with my longtime specialist because it was full because of COVID. The only reason I got into a hospital is because I have a friend who knows people in the executive level of the leadership at Hopkins. Thank you. Luckily, I did not get COVID there, but I am not going to restaurants. I am not seeing my family. I'm not seeing my new baby nephew. I'm not going into work. Luckily, I work for an organization that allows me to work from home. I'm here because I want to support our community, and I want to support people that have disabilities and chronic illnesses that are not able to be here or have the time or energy to speak for themselves. Like everyone here, I support the call of Organizing Black to defund the police and literally use the money for anything else. There's also a call coming from President Biden and echoed by City Council President to, and the mayor, sorry, to use leftover COVID funding to pay for law enforcement. Thank you. We have people who are not able to afford food. We have people who are not able to get adequate medical care. We have people who are limited to eight COVID tests a month regardless of the size of their family. We have people with long COVID who are being told that is not a real medical problem. They're not able to work. They're not able to support their families. They're not able to get on disability until their illness is recognized. Literally use the money for anything else. We've had a lot of great ideas. The kids don't have things to do except for be incarcerated. This is a money-making scheme. We have folks in our leadership who are, I'm not being at the crepe-ness, but people who are grifting our city. And you can say that you care about us and you want to do good and you're going to change things finally. When is that going to happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I just want to be very clear. I'm not sure the miscommunication, but I have never said that leftover COVID money or ARPA money should go towards law enforcement. What I've actually communicated is that money should go towards housing and increasing homeownership and creating generational wealth in our city as well as going after, creating upward mobility through education and job training, understanding, you know, that automation is taking over low-wage entry-level jobs at an astronomical rate. So I think it's really important that when we talk about the ARPA money, and I've been very clear about this for a very long time, that we look at ways of investing that money as opposed to spending that money. This is a one-shot deal, and I think that we could develop generational change. But I just wanted to set the record straight that I've never been on the record nor will I ever be on the record to think that, that ARPA money or any leftover COVID money should go towards law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman James Torrance from the District is with us, just seventh, I'm sorry, seventh, virtually, so he is online. Next up, Rakara Jones, eleven ninety-nine. Oh, actually, let me take a step back. Is there anyone else who is physically here, who has not testified, who wanted to testify? Okay. Very good. We will now jump to folks who have signed up to testify who are on virtually. We'll start with Rakara Jones, eleven ninety-nine, SEIU. Not here, okay. Taylor Smith Hams, Blue Water Baltimore.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Taylor Smith Hams. I'm a resident of Better Waverly and District fourteen, and I work for Blue Water Baltimore. Our mission is to restore the quality of Baltimore's waterways to foster a healthy environment and thriving communities. We urge you to prioritize investments in water and sewage infrastructure in this year's budget. We know the consequences of not properly investing in our water and wastewater infrastructure, from sewage backing up into thousands of Baltimoreans' homes every year to a state takeover of a wastewater treatment plant after Clean Water Act violations. This is unacceptable. Clean water is a human right. Baltimore City has a duty to invest in its sewer pipes and treatment plants without further burdening residents with water rate increases that disproportionately affect Black residents. The city must also increase investment, investments in its two programs that are meant to help residents who experience sewage backups in their homes, the Sewage On-Site Support SOS Program and the Expedited Reimbursement Program, ERP. The preliminary budget indicates that the city will continue supporting the two and a half million dollars dedicated for the SOS program, but this is far from enough, particularly given that the limited scope of the program leaves most residents without critical resources during what can be dangerous and traumatic events. Currently, the SOS and ERP programs only provide support to residents who can prove that their backups happened as a result of wet weather. But far more residents are impacted by sewage backups that occur in dry weather, meaning that the majority of residents who experience sewage backups are not eligible for any help from the city. The Department of Public Works published a feasibility study in November that estimated it would cost fourteen, fourteen point seven million dollars to provide direct cleanup assistance through the SOS program for all sewage backups in the city in wet or dry weather. That's roughly three percent of BPD's proposed budget. The city has an enormous opportunity to direct state and federal resources, including money from the American Rescue Plan Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law toward our water infrastructure to make sure that Baltimoreans have access to the clean water we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tisha Guthrie, Poppleton now. Kaitlyn Goldblatt, scan the police. Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Kaitlyn Goldblatt, and I'm a resident of District twelve. Two days ago, on my nephew's fourth birthday, I saw that another massacre of children had happened somewhere and that the cops had done nothing to stop it again. Police behavior like this does not exist in a vacuum, and we can just as easily see here how police do not stop harm and the foundation we build for perpetuating pain through divestment from all but policing. We already abandoned kids, for example, when we give their schools sixty-one cents for every dollar a police department has. We already destroy families when housing and development services receive fifteen cents for every dollar a police department gets. We already end lives when substance use and mental health services receive a single cent for every dollar a police department gets. These are all statistics pulled from the proposed Baltimore City budget. You, as the governing body charged with approving our city's budget, would devalue Baltimore City by denying its community's basic resources while funding a police budget that costs each individual in this city over nine hundred fifty dollars a year, by far the most per capita in the country. You have the chance to stop balancing budgets on the backs of the people those budgets have stolen from the most. I unequivocally support and stand with CJ, SJ, and Organizing Black to demand one hundred million dollars be cut from BPD's budget and invested into Black communities, a thirty million dollar Community Wellness Trust Fund to be governed through a participatory budgeting process be established, and the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and all crimes of poverty. As I speak to you now, I'm aware that only one of you who is absent has publicly said Keith Davis Jr.'s name since June twenty fifteen, when Baltimore City Police Officers shot at him dozens of times, hitting him three times, including once in the face. You may think you cannot defund the police despite the mayor himself voting to decrease police spending in twenty twenty. You may think that you are stopping violence if this budget funds the police to the extent that it does, even though it has been empirically proven that the best way to strengthen a community is to fund that community. But a budget is a moral document, and your vote on it is a moral choice, and your vote must be no. As humans living alongside me during this time, I know you must feel how bad things are nationwide and that surely worse is coming. This is the moment to strengthen communities holistically so we can survive the present and whatever comes next. I urge you to vote down the budget as it stands. Otherwise, what are you even doing here? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Next up, Christopher, Baltimore Court Watch. Alexis Gray, Organizing Black. Ruby Waldo, Walters Workers United.
Can you hear me all right?
Loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. My name is Ruby Waldo. I live in District three and have worked as an educator at the Walters Art Museum for the past five years. I'm here today on behalf of the Walters Workers United and our ongoing fight to form our union. Over a year has passed since the supermajority of workers signed union cards and sought an election, and yet museum leadership still refuses to speak to us to negotiate a fair election process. The Walters Art Museum is a public institution and an agency of the city of Baltimore. The museum needs to be held accountable to both the city and its taxpayers. We need a concrete breakdown of how the museum is spending public money. By choosing to cancel the annual fundraising gala and increase spending on consultants that enact union busting strategies, leadership has failed to live up to its fiduciary and community responsibility. We are asking for a conversation with the museum director, Julia Marcieri Alexander, Guy Flynn, and James DeGraffenwright. Throughout the past year, our director has refused every invitation to meet with us, often stating she can't take a side or won't engage in conversations about labor relations. As you know, elections are democratic, and having one means allowing staff to choose for themselves whether or not they want a union. When a museum director unilaterally makes a decision to not speak to employees about organizing or an election agreement, she has already taken an anti-union side. The museum has muddied the waters with confusing and irrelevant information by insisting on a union election through the National Labor Relations Board. The NLRB only serves the private sector for union elections. Therefore, the Walters Art Museum is not within their jurisdiction. We need your support to ensure a meeting with the museum director, Julia Marcieri Alexander, Guy Flynn, and James DeGraffenwright so that we can move forward with a fair election process. The Walters is ultimately an agency of the city of Baltimore, supported by public funding, and as such, has a responsibility to abide by democratic values and respect the collective will of its employees to form one wall-to-wall union in our workplace. We have seen the workers at the Baltimore Museum of Art walk this path alongside us, and yesterday, BMA leadership signed a union election agreement to allow a neutral third party to conduct their election. Workers at the Walters are asking for that same respect and parity at the Walters. Workers at the Walters are asking for that same respect and parity at the Walters. We need an election agreement that reflects museum leadership's responsibility to listen I believe I may have cut out.
We can hear you.
Remind me of the last thing that you heard. I don't want to repeat myself, but I'm happy to.
You had mentioned that the employees at the Walters deserved the same opportunity that BMA employees are being given and that you wanted a meeting with the executive director at the Walters.
Thank you. Yes, I'll just hop right back in.
Ma'am, I am going to ask you to wrap up because you had exceeded your time before. So if you could please start to wrap up your comments.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'll close by saying that we need an election agreement that reflects museum's leadership's responsibility to listen to and communicate to their staff, to negotiate with us and recognize our desire to unionize our workplace. We are asking that you bring us in the room with Walters Director Julia Marcieri Alexander, the Board Chair James DeGraffenwright, and the Board President Guy Flynn to get this agreement signed. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes everyone. Public testimony, correct?
We do have the.
You hear me?
Yes.
Hello, hi, everyone. My name is Pastor Emily Scott and I am a resident in Charles North. I serve as the pastor of St. Mark's Lutheran Church on the corner of 20th Street and St. Paul Street. Charles North is a diverse, creative neighborhood and my neighbors are among many things. Some of them are unhoused, some are transgender, some are Black or Brown, some are poor. Some of them have mental illness and some of them are addicted. My neighbors do not trust our police. The police are not helping my neighbors. The police are not making my neighbors safer or helping to address the myriad issues that they face each day. And as we know too well, in many cases, the police cause them harm, sometimes death. As a Christian leader, I am stunned by the obscene amount of money our city is continuing to pour into policing, especially when it has not reduced gun violence in our city. In my faith tradition, we believe that it is communities that make changes in our society, not policing. I don't really care that the budget is at a late stage in the process. That is no excuse for this immoral action. I urge the city council to reallocate funding from the police budget and invest instead in mental health services, community-based safety systems, affordable housing, health and addiction programs, education for our children, and workforce development. The city does not need more policing. We need more support for our communities. Continuing to move forward with this budget is an offense to the citizens of Baltimore. Please be bold. Make the change now. You can hit the brakes on this budget and do what is moral, what is just, and what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, anyone else?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, my name is Chris Camo. I'm with Baltimore Court Watch. We're a transparency organization focused on the Maryland criminal justice system. First of all, I'd like to say that we listened to bail hearings in Circuit Court and we witnessed the real and constant trauma inflicted on our neighbors, young and old, by our corrupt, violent, and racist police department. We have observed and reported on over 5,000 hearings in the Baltimore City Circuit Court and we regularly hear how Baltimore police officers, backed by half a billion dollars, surveil our children's social media, they stalk, harass, lie, plant evidence on, terrorize, and kill our neighbors. And if any of you need that to feel safer, I'd ask you to resign now. Our world and our city are crumbling at an exponentially quicker pace each day. I know it and you know it. And everywhere we look in the city, there's actual work to be done. The difference between us, though, is that you have the institutional power to do something about it. You can continue to say your hands are tied and that you have to work back channels and in the shadows out of fear and the vindictiveness of some of your colleagues. You can continue to deflect responsibility and try to drown us out with word salads and policy speak. And you can continue to say privately what you should be showing us publicly, but we see you and we're insulted. You have been elected to enact the will of the people and you continue to fail us. We, the public, the people you serve, need to actually see actions and not listen to excuses. The only way forward is to fund the best of humanity, the best of our city, to fund our communities. And policing, including prosecuting, must be dismantled to do it. There is no time to spare. And so we echo the demands of Organizing Black and CJ S.J. to, number one, cut $100 million from BPD's budget and invest it into Black communities. Number two, create a $30 million community wellness trust fund to be governed through a participatory budgeting process. And number three, to remove the police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and all crimes of poverty. And we'd also like to address something another taxpayer brought up, which is recent recommendations from President Biden that COVID relief ARPA funds should be used to further fund police. And we ask that each member of the city council make public their stance on whether COVID spending relief, COVID relief funds should be spent on policing and if it's acceptable to them. And we'd ask them to demand that Mayor Scott make his position public on that. Thank you. Free Keith Davis Jr., Justice for Tyrone West, and Justice for Curtis Steel.
Thank you. Matt, do we have anyone else? Salam?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Robert Tunde. I've been a teacher, artist, and resident for decades in the city. Despite our city's continuous decline in population and our incompetent leadership, the mayor's office has continued to increase the budget for what they call policing. And it's mind-boggling. Year after year, we attend these meetings and city residents come here and tell you alternatives to policing. Year after year, Organizing Black has brought residents to ask the mayor and others to defund the police. Residents have, as you know, as you see in the community, people ask for violence interrupters, crisis aversion, and reentry work for people returning home from prison. As many have noted, this meeting begs the question, how can it not be entirely performative because the mayor who has proposed this budget is not even here? This council's most notable bill thus far this year has been a farce to give real estate back to developers. But I'm here to tell the mayor that we remember that he ran on a policy of decreasing police funding. And as a Black man, it's disgusting to see Black men who are up here legislate to arrest more of our people. These are disgraceful acts and one day you will be held accountable for your actions. But I want to speak directly to the residents here because we need to organize. Because the only way to stop crime is to prevent it before it starts by helping young people. We must organize and develop alternatives by volunteering at our communities' local schools because these people before us are not interested. For example, according to their own audit of Baltimore City Schools, only 10% of our students satisfy all course requirements to graduate with anything in the vocational field. I implore our community residents that we work to do something about this. We can create a pipeline, an infrastructure, in our schools to get our students to jobs that are out here in the real world, to prepare them for the future, which is going to be in green energy and environment protection. We must defund the police and it's important, and I implore everyone before us to understand that there is alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salam. Is that everyone, Matt? All right, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Council President Mosby for closing remarks and then a little bit of housekeeping and then we'll be in recess. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone who participated in taxpayers' night, whether in person or online. I think the council heard your concerns. I think that everybody came with the ability of trying to work through good government and trying to enact their civic engagement. And that's the point of this process. I appreciate everyone who was in attendance tonight and your decorum in allowing us to listen and hear to all the concerns of the citizens of Baltimore, to Mr. Chair and to the committee and other members of the council, how this will be a long and arduous budget process. I look forward to running a very efficient and effective process. And this is an important step in that right direction. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. If there's any additional comments or concerns that was not raised tonight that you could not fit within your two minutes or three minutes of allotted time, please do not hesitate to reach out to the council. This does not stop the process today. We ask that you be fully engaged in watching and participating in the upcoming budget hearings with the actual agency and committee directors and leaders. With that, I think that what I'll also say is I think that we have to do a much better job of communicating the actual budget process. And, you know, I'm going to take the ownership of ensuring that we do that next year. I think that when we look at our charter, when we look at the construct of the corporation of the mayor and city council, when we talk about the actual steps of process and procedures associated with the budget, that there is a lot of misinformation. And it would be easy for folks not to necessarily understand or know. And I think the council has to do a much better job of laying out those processes, those procedures, and understanding the basic role of what our autonomy is as a council associated with the budget and how we currently sit. And also, in retrospect, our dealing and inner workings with the administration. So again, I can't say this enough. Thank you for your participation and sitting through this. Many folks have been at work or been at school all day and for you to come out and still provide testimony to us is really beneficial and we truly thank you. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, echoing your thanks to everyone who participated tonight, the city council may consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 tax rate at the meeting of the city council on June 13th. That, of course, is subject to change. In the meantime, Ways and Means Committee budget hearings will resume on Tuesday, May 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then on Wednesday, wait, Tuesday, May 31st, I apologize, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then on Wednesday, June 1st, Thursday, June 2nd, Friday, June 3rd, Monday, June 6th, and Tuesday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in council chambers. The entire schedule of budget hearings is available on the city council website where you can go to baltimore.legistar.com/calender. We are now in recess. Thank you.